Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission Meeting of July 28, 2008. Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll? Commissioner Adam?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Grumney?
Here.
Commissioner Len?
Absent.
Chair Reynolds? Now is the time for public comments and I don't have any cards so we'll go right into written comments announcements and continuously. Mr. Town.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There is a supplemental packet for tonight's meeting with regard to Case 6C. That is the municipal code amendment with regard to wall heights and it provides some sample photos of a person in front of wall heights of varying heights from seven feet up to 10 to give the Commission additional background information relative to that case before you hear it in a few minutes. And it's all ahead at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Will the clerk please open the hearing 6A?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6A regarding case HUP 2008-70135, applicant Bella Luna Restaurant, Inc., request to allow live entertainment and new operating hours at an existing restaurant. Location, 579 North Bentu Park Road.
And Mr. Chua, good evening. Would you like to give the staff report?
Yes, good evening, Chair Reynolds, members of the Commission. For your consideration tonight is an application requesting to allow live entertainment and extended operating hours. The, like mentioned earlier, the applicant is proposing to have live entertainers at the subject restaurant. The proposed operating hours are 11:30 a.m. opening daily and closing times at 10 p.m. from Monday through Thursday, 1 a.m. Friday and Saturday, and 12 midnight on Sundays. This is the aerial photo with the inset showing the location of the restaurant and across at the back are some residential areas. The extended hours, the Friday and Saturday, the restaurant would be open until 1 o'clock in the morning. Currently, they are approved under the existing special use permit to open until midnight. On Sundays, the restaurant will be open until midnight, which currently closes at 11 under the existing special use permit. The proposed operating hours is actually less, four and a half hours less than what was originally approved. The live entertainment would be limited to inside the restaurant and there will be no live entertainment allowed on the outside patio area. Guitar and piano players will be performing from Mondays through Thursdays. There will be DJ entertainment limited to Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. The closest residence is approximately 115 feet to the west. As you saw earlier, it was to the back of the restaurant. The live entertainment hours is limited to close at 10 p.m. daily from Monday through Thursday. On Friday and Saturday, it'll be allowed to midnight and on Sundays, up to 9 p.m. at the latest. These hours are similar to the hours approved for the Bella Vino Restaurant, which also serves alcoholic drinks. It's also approved for live entertainment and located in general proximity to a residential As far as noise control, the staff have recommended restricted hours for live entertainment as earlier mentioned. We also have restricted days for the DJ entertainment. We require that the external doors must be closed during live entertainment and additional noise containment would be required if complaints are received. The approval of this special use permit will provide the applicant with reasonable and conforming use of the property. This project is exempted under Class 1 exemption of the CEQA guidelines. Staff recommends approval of HUP 2008-70135 based on the findings and subject to the conditions detailed in the staff report and I'm ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Are there questions? Commissioner Fisher?
Yes, Mr. Chua mentions in the staff report that additional, I guess I'll call it mitigation, will take place if there's complaints heard. What will be put in place if complaints come in from the neighbors regarding this?
If we verify complaints, we, if you can look at the staff report, I mean on the suggested conditions, we require that the applicant, let me look at that real quick. Okay, noise containment under Condition Number 15. It says here, "The applicant shall take all necessary precautions, including but not limited to installing and soundproofing if verified complaints of excessive noise and disturbance to neighboring properties are received by the city, subject to review and approval by the Community Development Department." So if we have verified, if it's been verified that they are noisy or there's disturbance to the surrounding neighborhood, then we have the authority to ask them to provide soundproofing for the restaurant. And also, under Condition Number 10, revocation of permit, it says here, "Any verified complaints of excessive noise level or disturbance to neighboring residential properties or violation of approved hours of operation shall constitute grounds for initiation of proceedings to consider revocation of this special use permit and/or further restriction of hours of operation."
Okay, one last question. Have you received any other phone calls or letters regarding this permit?
I received one phone call expressing concern over the noise that may be generated by this project over the phone and I have not heard from that person since.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Chua, I wanted to ask you, when they called to and asked about noise, were they concerned over the noise of the entertainment or the noise of the people leaving and because there is parking around the side in the back of the building?
From what I could remember, I think the noise would be based on the live entertainment.
On the music or the live entertainment itself, not that people talk on the way to their vehicles?
Yes, I'm sorry. May I also add that we also have a suggested Condition 16 against boitering. So this would take care of the noise issue as far as people leaving the restaurant. And also, may I point out, on Page 5 of the staff report, there should be, under Table 1, there should be two asterisks on the second line, right under Table 1, which says, "Live entertainment shall not be later than 9 p.m." Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions at all? Okay, then I will go to the cards. The first speaker and the main speaker, and you will have 15 minutes. If you'd come forward and state your name and city residence, and it's Stephanie James. Let me, good evening.
Hello, my name is Stephanie James. I'm here on behalf of Bella Luna Italian Restaurant. My parents are the owners. We're here tonight to request approval of the HUP we applied for in April, as our business cannot survive without this change. We purchased Bella Luna in October of 2004 and business has gone down 45% since then. We have tried to improve business and stay competitive with other restaurants in our area by changing our menu, offering catering, and offering happy hour with free appetizers. We have advertised with almost every available media and have even used banners compliant with city regulations to promote sales. My parents are working seven days a week to be able to cut back on staff expenses and overhead. In the winter of last year, prior to understanding city requirements for an HUP, we began to offer our clients entertainment. We hired musicians to play ambient music during dinner and periodically had a DJ come on either Friday or Saturday night. We played a variety of music from big band to 50s and Latin and hip-hop music. We hired security to check IDs and to ensure and maintain a safe and friendly environment. Our clients responded well and our business was surviving. We were finally able to keep our heads above water. On April 17, an officer from the Sheriff's Department came and told us that we were not allowed to play any type of music without an HUP from the city. We immediately shut down the entertainment and applied for the HUP the very next day. We have complied with all the requests of law enforcement, the Planning Department, and the City of Thousand Oaks itself. At this point, the business is in dire straits, as over the last three months since we stopped, the business has further declined. We have exhausted all of Bella Luna's monies, including the savings of both of my parents. Since the filing of the HUP, we had over 1,000 petitions signed in our favor. We have gone door-to-door in the adjacent townhomes and informed our neighbors of our intentions. All those we were able to contact also did sign those petitions. We have begun scheduling our employees for training given by the State of California Alcoholic Beverage Control Department to ensure the safety of our patrons and educate our staff. To the best of our knowledge to date, we have not had any complaints filed against us with law enforcement or with the city. To ensure that our planned operation does not interfere with our adjacent neighbors, we had a mechanical engineer come out and conduct a sound test with the music playing. The test concluded that Bella Luna's music is no louder than any normal daytime condition with the doors closed. We have copies of those reports for your review. Our business has gone down dramatically over the last year. My parents are already working seven days a week with limited staff. Bella Luna is now struggling to stay open. We have a chance to maintain our business if you approve this HUP. We have exhausted all other possibilities and desperately need this change. Without this approval, Bella Luna will most certainly close its doors. Please consider our request and allow us to continue our business and maintain their livelihood. We appreciate your time and your consideration. Thank you.
Are there questions of the speaker? Commissioner Grumney?
Good evening. Thank you for coming. And I'm sorry to hear that you're facing challenges because I'm a patron of your restaurant and I've enjoyed it very much. The food is wonderful.
Thank you. That's my dad's doing.
I had a question and it probably might be a little bit off the point, but I was kind of curious why on your application you were cutting the hours back. It seems to be, in my way of thinking, that if you went ahead and you had it approved for the longer hours, even if you choose not to stay open, you'd have that available for flexibility should you decide at a later date to be able...
We were giving and taking a little bit at the recommendation of the Planning Department. So we're not really trying to stay open past 10 o'clock on most days. We're just asking for the weekends to be able to have additional entertainment during those times. There really isn't a need for us to be open after 10 p.m.
Would you find it to be an advantage to be able to have those available to you if...
Possibly in the future, but at this point, not necessarily.
Okay, thank you.
I also noticed on your door that you have hours marked that are a lot fewer hours than what you're entitled to.
That's correct.
So...
Our kitchen is mostly what drives our business right now and we've noticed that after 8:00, 8:30, especially in the summertime with people on vacation, there really isn't a need for us to stay open. So it's actually costing us more money to stay open longer with the air conditioning and the staff. It's actually more beneficial for us to close when there's no patrons.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Adam?
Hello. It says in the report that you, and I got your report here, the sound level testing, that you played the music at its working volume?
Actually, we played it at the maximum volume that it would go. We don't intend to play it at that level. We just basically turned it as far as it can go and walked back. We know that wall, the sound wall behind the restaurant is 70 feet. We closed all of the doors and went to that wall. And any questions that you would have about the actual testing, I can't give you, but the mechanical engineer is here who did the testing. But like I said, we turned it as far as it would go, which is not normal operating for us, but we just wanted to know how far back you could hear the music when it was at full blast.
I see. So you turned it up to 10, huh?
We turned it up to 105 decibels. I do know that.
Okay. Did you query any of the neighbors if they heard it or you just kind of self-tested it?
Actually, can I direct those to the mechanical engineer?
Yeah, sure.
I have a card for Randy James. So after she's finished, we'll have him come up. He says for questions only, but we'll have him come up.
Just one other quick question. On Condition 14, it says that all doors leading outside the building should be kept closed. Is that feasible? I mean, you're able to do that?
It is. We have only three doors. We have a front door, a side door that goes off to our patio, and we also have a back door. The back door is a big metal door, so once that's shut, the residences don't hear anything, according to the test. And on the side, we do have glass panels on the side of that restaurant, so you do hear through the glass, but it's not on the residential side, it's on the hotel side. So we have tested that as well.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Then I will call Randy James up. If you state your name and city residence, please, and you have five minutes.
Hi, my name's Randy James. I reside in Newbury Park. And if there is any questions, thank you. If there is any questions resolving surrounding the testing, I can give you a brief overview of how I conducted the tests, if you please. As you asked, Commissioner, we did play the music at a sound level of 105 decibels, which was quite uncomfortable, I can tell you, inside. I wouldn't expect, I wouldn't expect normal operation to be that loud because it was bordering on being painful. One thing I would like to clear up is that when I did take the test, and if you look at the second page, there's an aerial photograph in red lines I did illustrate where I actually took measurements at. So I took test measurements from immediately behind the restaurant and then got further and further away. And by the time I got 30 to 40 feet away, the sound levels were identical with the sound levels that I took with no music playing at all. That does not mean that you cannot hear the music. It means the music is no louder than just the normal ambient noise that's around.
Any other questions? Commissioner Adam?
Oh, that's very interesting. So the young lady mentioned you went all the way to the wall that separated the restaurant from the condominiums?
Yes, that's correct.
And at that point, it just became ambient sound?
That's correct, yeah. When I, in fact, while I was conducting the test, I have in my notes on the first page there that a couple of FedEx trucks drove by and I estimated, I didn't run out and measure how far away they were, I estimated I was 10 to 15 feet away. I was getting sound levels of about 15 decibels higher than just the normal noise of the wind and the traffic on Bentu Park Road.
I see. Thank you. Very thorough.
Thanks.
Any other questions to Mr. James? Thank you very much, Mr. James.
Great, thank you.
Next speaker is Matt Cossaro. You come forward and state your name and city residence, and you also have five minutes.
Hello, my name's Matt Cossaro. I reside in Newbury Park. I've known Nicole for a very long time and her and her husband are two of the nicest people I've ever met. Our relationship first began as a patron and then it turned into an employee and then now I'm a patron again. And one thing I do know about Nicole and Fernando is they're two of the hardest people that I've ever known. And it's not something that they really want to do, it's something that they have to do in these times, as you know and everyone else in here knows. So on that, I hope it goes through. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much. Next speaker is R. Cormier. And if you would, please, state your name and city residence, and you have five minutes.
I'm Romaine Cormier. I live right here in Thousand Oaks. I've been going to Bella Luna like, you know, years. We're very good friends. For the French, we're French too. So it's extremely easy to choose the best place for your evenings and Bella Luna is certainly one of the top in Thousand Oaks. And after the good food and everything, adding the music was really the mixing of making the place one of the top that you can possibly hope for. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you very much. Jean Mack. And then the final speaker will be Jeff Bach. So if you want to get ready then. Ms. Mack, if you come forward and state your name and city residence, please.
Hi there, my name is Jean Mack and my husband and I, Tony Mack, go to Bella Luna very frequently, at least once or twice a week. We love the food, we love the entertainment, and we love Nicole and Fernando. And we really want them to get their license for entertainment because they're wonderful people. Thank you.
Could you tell us where you live?
I live in Moore Park.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to the speaker? Thank you, Mrs. Mack.
Thank you.
And the last speaker is Jeff Bach. You come forward, state your name and city residence, and you have five minutes.
Yes, Bach, 609 Platino, and I'd like to pass this to you.
Give it to the clerk, please.
I think they have wonderful food. I'm sorry you're having problems. I live 150 feet away from your back door. We've had to call the police. You can be a wonderful business...
Excuse me, make sure that you speak to the commissioners. You can use that microphone, but speak to us and not the audience. Okay, thank you.
I am 150 feet from their back door. I took those pictures this evening to show you how close this really is. When the gentleman who's the engineer spoke about ambient noise, I don't think he took it at 12 o'clock at night. He's talking about FedEx trucks. When you have noise in that back door open, now, we're going to close the back doors, what's being said, however, it's hot in the kitchen. They don't keep it closed and I wouldn't either if I'm working in the kitchen staff. They're not the best neighbors, as I said, because we did have to call the police on them once to have the music shut down. All weekend, every weekend, the bottles get thrown back out into the back into the dumpster. It's a very loud bracket, but what are we going to do? Stop throwing out the bottles? They just, this is what I'll say, I ask you to give the same consideration that you've given other areas of the city, like behind McDonald's where they're not allowed to use their microphone. We're not against, and by the way, the petition is for five of the neighbors who are directly affected by this. We're not against them having the outdoor patio. We're not against some of the things. Any form of amplified music, we're against. It's okay if they have music. They want to have a guitar, great. DJ, no. Just because it will carry through. A sound study is not done at 12 o'clock at night where noise carries because there's nobody there else to make noise. Let's see. Outdoors, I think I've covered it. As I said, I have been, our neighborhood is kind of a troubled neighborhood to begin with and we're trying to clean it up. We're asking that we get the same consideration as other neighborhoods do. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Commissioner Grumney?
Hi, thank you for coming and testifying. Your concern is noise that's happening at midnight, is that correct?
Anytime, anytime, I'd say after 10 o'clock.
Okay. And what noise are you hearing right now?
We're hearing that the cooks have got, they play their music out the back right now. They got their music going after the place closes.
Okay.
They also, they keep that door open and no matter, why are we having mitigation after or if we complain? We should have that in place now. No, they are, they are making noise now.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. We'll go back to staff at this time. There's a delay while staff is confering. Mr. Chua?
Just one quick note here, just to, this came, this case came through the Code Compliance Department when the police personnel notified us of one particular event regarding live entertainment, but we don't, as far as the Community Development Department is concerned, we don't, we did not receive any more complaints regarding the projects.
Are there any questions of staff? Mr. Fisher?
Mr. Chua, although they've proposed reduced hours Monday through Thursday, let's say business picks up and they want to go back to 11 p.m., can that be done administratively?
That may be done administratively, well, however, if this is special, well, no, I'm sorry, I'll take that back. Any request, any request for change in the conditions of this project requires Planning Commission approval unless you specifically state that any change in the operating hours may be approved by the Community Development Department.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, then we will go back to Ms. James. You have a rebuttal time of five minutes. If you state your name and city residence, please. Whoops, just a minute. Okay.
My name is Stephanie James. I live in Newbury Park. Mr. Bach, was it that commented? We haven't had any music playing since April 11th, so I don't know what he's hearing these days. It's not us. We shut down immediately once we were notified that we were not allowed to have music unless we had an HUP. I also do want to say, we do not have any complaints filed against us with the police. We had reports already drawn up that we have not had any complaints at all. And our door that he's talking about is not a kitchen door, it's a back exit door and it does not stay open while there's music playing. It just doesn't.
Any questions to the speaker? Mr. Adam?
Yes, hi. I think the gentleman, his concern was that the door was open.
Correct.
But some of the staff were out in the parking lot playing music. Is that possible?
Well, their staff playing music? No. We don't have any capable way of having music in the back. We have a sound system inside. I don't know, we don't even have speakers outside and I don't know how he would be hearing music in the parking lot.
Hmm, maybe I heard him wrong. That's what I thought I heard him say, that some of the cooks perhaps were...
Well, the cook's my dad.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Does your dad play music in the parking lot?
Uh, no.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Ms. James. And also, along with the speakers, there were seven statement cards and all of them were in favor of the project. So at this time, I would close the public hearing and it's time for discussion or motion with the commissioners. Mr. Commissioner Fisher?
Yes, I, as Commissioner Grumney, have gone to this restaurant on a few different occasions. I live a couple miles from there and it's wonderful food. I do appreciate the applicant actually doing the sound level... I do appreciate the applicant actually doing the sound level testing. That was great. And I also appreciate the give and take on the operating hours, although I think you're cutting yourself short on that should business turn around. With that, I would like to move approval of SUP 2008-70135 with the findings and conditions listed in our packet with the additional condition that the Community Development Department can administratively increase or decrease the hours based on applicant's request. And as I stated before, I live a couple miles from this restaurant, and where I live, all s I hear is freeway sound from two miles out. So whether it's midnight or 3:00 in the morning, it's loud wherever you are, and that's two miles away. So I think with what they've put in place here that it's given them reasonable use of their facility for their business.
Any other comments? Commissioner Grumney?
I will be voting in favor of the motion. And probably the only thing that I would add to that is to ask you guys to be very sensitive. What I heard the neighbor say was in regards to trash late at night. Maybe there's a better time, you know, to be able to do that so that they can sleep. But good luck to you.
Any other comments?
And I also will be supporting the motion. I've been at the restaurant, it's been several years since I was there, but I think that when people do live next to commercial establishment, that they have to realize that there will be noise. And I'm sure that with your father being the cook, and if it's a help with the dishwasher or whoever it is, that it's getting rid of the trash, that they will be aware that there are neighbors. And especially the neighbors on the second level, sound travels up, so they're probably a lot more sensitive than someone on the ground floor.
And with that, final comments to your motion. Commissioner Fisher, please vote.
Motion passed, 4-0.
And there is a 10-day appeal period. We'll go on to Item 6B. If the clerk would please open the hearing.
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda Item 6B regarding case SUP 2008-70209. Applicant, The Next Generation Gaming Place. Request to allow the operation of a video game arcade center. Location, 1015 Broadbeck Drive, Suite D.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chang. You'll give the staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Chair Reynolds and members of the commissions. If you can turn your attention for the screen in front of you. And what this project is, the applicant is allowing... Is requesting to allow the operation of a video game arcade at the location of 1015 Broadbeck Drive, Suite D. And the applicant is requesting the video game arcade inside existing commercial buildings. And this is the project location, and location is... What they want to do basically is more tenant improvement, doing interior changes, and also allow to operate a video game arcade center. And staff would just like to provide a background to this project. Arcade use is allowed in the C3 zone with a special use permit, subject to the approval by the planning commissions. And this project location is... The building has approximately 23,206 square feet. And the tenant space for this arcade center is about 2,275 square feet. And out of that 2,200 square feet, 1,336 will be their main gaming areas, which include 45 gaming stations. That includes the video games or personal computer, PC games. And out of that main gaming area, the video game staff person or the arcade owner will be able to maintain a visual contact with the main gaming space because they don't have any high partition blocking their visibilities. And the arcade center also plans to have two multiplayer game rooms, which are reserved for physical kind of type of games or gaming required standing around, moving around type of games. And for the hours of operation, the applicant is proposing to have it from Sunday to Thursday will be 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and Friday and Saturdays will be 10:00 a.m. to midnight. And usually, the typical pick hours for this type of a recreation or a video game business will be happening on evenings or on weekends. And staff has added a condition to the staff report restricting the minors to be prohibited after 10:00 p.m. unless it was accompanied by a guardian or a parent, or they have a written permission for the minors to be in the arcade after 10:00 p.m. And for the parking requirements, the municipal code requires a parking requirement for the arcade use is one space for every 250 square feet of floor area, which is the same use as a previous business office use. Therefore, staff does not anticipate an increase in demand for onsite parkings. One of the reasons is that the arcade usually attracts minors, they're primary customers. And typically for arcade, parents would just kind of drop off the minors to be in arcades, and they will come back them to pick them up. So usually, the parents, they don't use the onsite parking. So therefore, staff does not anticipate there's increase in demand for onsite parking. And staff also add a condition, as well as required by the code, that bicycle parking is provided. And bicycle parking will be provided in front of the arcade center, which will be clear visible for any patrons who want to use a bicycle rack. And this project location will be in a commercial center and also surrounding by commercial industrial areas. And the nearest residential zone is about 1,200 feet away on the south side of 101 Freeway. And typically for arcade business, the concern for arcade business, the noise generated and create nuisance for the residential neighborhood. And in this case, since the arcade will be at least 1,200 feet away from the residential neighborhood, staff does not anticipate the noise will be a significant issue for this project. And the police department has reviewed this project and does not object to propose use as long the conditions of approval have been adopted. And one of the couple of conditions, including the security guards and the surveillance system, are included as part of the conditions to mitigate any type of potential impacts this arcade may cause. And this project is exempt from the Sequoia requirement pursuant this is only a minor alterations, because this project is more... Mine... Actually, it's a tenant improvement to existing commercial buildings, and there are no exterior changes except the sign up... The exterior building sign, which will be required once these... If the commission is going to approve this SUP project. And for staff recommendations, staff recommend this project to be approved based on the findings and subject to the conditions contained in the staff report. And this concludes staff's presentations. And just for the commission's reference, and staff also has a representative from the Thousand Oaks Police Department here to answer any question regarding crime prevention or police-related issues.
Questions? Commissioner Adam?
Yes, thank you. Condition 13, where we talk about the, you know, the timeline of 10 o'clock and minors won't be allowed in afterwards. Will the security guard there be enforcing that then? Is that the object?
Yes. One of the responsibility or obligation of the arcade owner, as well as the security guard, is to kind of enforce the conditions, including the minors restrictions. And the arcade owner will require the minors to either have a written commission... Permission from the parents, or the parents need to be there to accompany the minors. But it's the responsibility of the security guard, as well as the arcade operator.
I'm just trying to picture in my mind how in practicality, he would... He or she would enforce that. Are they going to go up and ask kids for their IDs? And if they are under 18, then they're going to ask them for a letter from the parents? How do they identify who they want to, you know, ask? Are they just going to go by instinct or...
I want to just point out one thing. Ultimately, it's the applicant's responsibility to ensure that the condition is complied for. How the applicant chooses to ensure that this is met is really up to the applicant. I can tell you, we've had discussions with the applicant, and they have consent forms that they're going to be having the minors fill out and have the parent come in and actually sign it. But ultimately, whether the applicant wants the security guard to go around and ask people or whether they issue identification cards that are based on a signature by a parent, you know, that's really up to the applicant to determine how they're going to do it. And you could probably ask the applicant.
I'll ask the applicant then. That's a good question. Because the other thing I want to understand is condition 28, it talks about that ultimately, maybe the security guard's hours would be cut down. I want to see how that would jibe with the enforcement of 18 or over after 10 o'clock. On the bicycle rack, it says a minimum of eight bikes. You think that's going to be enough?
Since this project is located in vicinity of a commercial industrial areas, and the nearest residential is about like 1,200 feet away on the south side freeways, staff does not anticipate a demand for a lot of bicycle users. But since there's a requirement, the applicant is required to put a bicycle rack, and staff can always look at if there's increasing bicycle usage, staff can require them to have additional bike rack in there just in case. But at initial stages, staff does not anticipate a high demand for bicycle user at this point.
Okay. But that's something that we could allow for based on the usage then?
Yes.
Okay. That's good. Oh, the only other thing is just to comment on condition 20... Wait a minute. Oh, condition 27 with the security cameras? I think that's a very good idea, if I may say. In this day and age, I think that we should have security cameras in a facility like this, protect the city and other parties.
Yeah. The security camera will be subject to the approval by the police department based on their standards and what their experience are.
Good. Thank you.
Commissioner Grumney?
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Chang. How are you this evening? I just have one question. I was curious, if it is at full capacity, do you know what the maximum number of persons that can be in the facility?
Based on the occupancy low calculation the applicant submitted on our site plans, the maximum number of people they can... In the room is 87. And it shows on the submitted site plan, they provide occupancy calculations.
Okay.
So 87.
Okay. It's not very big. And then I have one question for our police representative. I'm curious, do we have anything else similar like this in the city of Thousand Oaks? And if we do, is there any known problems that have come about from these types of
There is no other immediate business similar to this, not only in this city, but in the other cities in the county. So there was no other statistical draw for us to make a comparison to that would be useful in any way. The conditions for the surveillance, as well as the curfew, obviously, we have a 10 o'clock curfew in Thousand Oaks every day of the week, not just Monday through Thursday, but every day of the week it's 10 o'clock. The letter from the parents would be needed, obviously. You know, we have a history of protecting the kids. Surveillance is there to protect them, as well as the curfew. So I would suggest that with the security guard presence, if that was to be cut back on at all, it wouldn't be in the evening hours. So even if it is termed that the security guard is not needed all day, the time of which they would be cut would be during the daytime hours and not the evening. The evening, we still believe it's just a necessity.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I had a question. I know my son used to go up to a place, Laser Zone or something like that, up in Oxnard or Nylin Acres. I don't know if that facility is similar to this, but do you know of any problems?
It was a Laserstar in Camrio. And I was a detective in Camrio for five years while that was in operation. We did not have any significant problems there, no.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
No further questions to staff? And Mr. Chang, did you have anything else that you wanted to add before we start the card?
No, this one.
Okay. Thank you. The main speaker, and it's Sid Lafitte. You have 15 minutes. If you'd come forward and state your name and city residence, please.
Good evening. My name is Sid Lafitte, and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks, California. First, I'd like to say thank you, Matt, for all of your help through getting through the special use permit process. I'd like to say that I've lived in this area since 1989. Prior to moving to Thousand Oaks, I worked for SNS Construction, who built the Rancho Cano community. While working for SNS, I met a majority of homeowners in Rancho Cano. And I used to joke, and I would say, "This place is as close to Mayberry RFD as you could get." Then I decided I wanted to be part of the Mayberry RFD phenomenon. I decided to move. The rest is history. My mother and father lived next door to me. My best friend lives across the street. My home even made Christmas decoration headlines in the Ventura Star a couple of years ago. How much more Mayberry RFD can you get? The point is, Thousand Oaks is our home, and we love it here. As my children have become teenagers, we have noticed a large void in this wonderful city. There are very few places for tweens and teens to have fun. I am disheartened when I see children walking the streets and the malls with no place to go. I have experienced this firsthand with my own children and their friends. Therefore, I have three wireless networks and five gaming computers in my home now, so that the kids can come in and hang out and play. I feel better knowing that they are safe and off the streets. My business, The Next Generation Gaming, will be an extension of my home, and the capacity will allow more children off the streets. I would like to provide the children of the Cano Valley with a one-of-a-kind entertainment experience. Next Generation will be a place where tweens and teens can play their favorite Wii, computer, Xbox games such as Guitar Hero, DDR2, Zucchini, Webkins, and Team Fortress 2, only to name a few. My goal is to provide a social yet safe atmosphere where kids are allowed to have good wholesome fun. Next Generation will be completely free of drugs, gambling, alcohol, and violence. Our location will be equipped with a state-of-the-art surveillance camera system that will be approved by the Thousand Oaks Police Department. In addition, we will have security guards in order to ensure that all customers, employees are kept comfortable and safe in a non-threatening environment. Anyone who disrupts the business, customer activities, or violates center rules will be asked to leave, which may include a permanent ban. This includes but not limited to verbal or physical abusive behavior, possession or use of drugs or alcohol, and any other disruptive or offensive behavior. Our internet will also be locked and secure. Tweens and teens have a tendency to pull away from their parents to hang out with their peers. I would like to provide an opportunity for kids to hang out with their families and their peers in a fun and social environment. Therefore, Next Generation will host parent-child competitions in order to foster and build family relationships. Our goal at Next Generation is to add to the Mayberry RFD phenomenon. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Adam?
Good evening, Ms. Lafitte. Do you think you'll be there on premises?
Yes. All the time.
All the time.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I would like that.
I plan on it.
Never met before, but you impress me as someone who's had experience with children and gaming and...
I do. And, you know, this is not just a business for me. It's, like I said, in my home, I take in all the children of the neighborhood in Newbury Park and Sequoia, just because, like I said, I am disheartened about what I've seen. And I want them to have a safe place. And that is my primary goal, because this is for the kids of Cano Valley. It's not for the masses. And if I had to, to where... Put in place the membership to where only children from, you know, with IDs from the surrounding schools, then I'm prepared to do that, with membership fees that offset $1,000 to the public, $50. to the public, fifty dollars for students. Because that is my goal, is to provide a place for the kids, not for, it's not for the masses. And anyone is welcome in, but if they threaten the, the atmosphere of what I'm trying to provide for the kids of Thousand Oaks, it won't be tolerated. And I plan on working with the police department and my security guards to enforce all of the rules. And I plan to set those rules. I wanna be very harsh about the rules right up front, because I wanna set the tone.
Tough love, huh?
But, you know, they all love it. I mean, you know, they're all, you know, most of the kids are, are very good kids in this area.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Let me just ask you the question that I asked our staff member about the enforcement from ten o'clock on. How do you envision that that's gonna work in practicality?
Well, the kids, when they come in to play, they must fill out a membership information, because they have to get a membership ID in order to log onto the computer in order to get, to be allowed to play in the facility. And at that time, they have to bring a parent in. It's not just bring the form in. Your parent has to come into the location and, and sign the parental consent form. So at that time, I will know who's who in the facility. And if I don't know someone, I will be asking for ID. And if they can't prove ID, they will be asked to leave.
I see. So the, the security guard at ten o'clock, then he has an ID, he'll have an ID system built, built in?
Yes.
I understand. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate your remarks.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Excuse me. I noticed that there, you're surrounded by restaurants, and there are a lot of tables outside. In fact, I counted them, the ones to the right of the store. And I just thought, how are you going to prevent, and even though there's a condition about loitering, what are you going to do? Will your security guards be going outside and seeing that the kids aren't loitering, or sitting at those tables, or taking up...
Yes, there will be. And there will be inside rules, and there will be outside rules. And the rules will be followed.
And my last thing is that I always kinda harp on this, because I have a handicap placard. I notice all in front of your place, there are handicap spots. And so, when someone drops off their child, I would hope that you'd make the people aware that even to drop off a child, they're not to use a handicap spot unless they do actually have a placard. That's really a big thing with me. I know people think, oh, I'm just gonna take a few seconds to go to the ATM. It's okay if I park in that spot. That if you're someone who has a problem getting around, that just that few minutes you drive by and see a vehicle there, and there are a lot of times, I'll just keep on driving, wanting to stop. So I would hope that you would watch that.
I do. And as I said, my, my parents live next door to me, and they're aging parents. And my mom is still able to walk, and I'll even tell her, let's pass that parking spot up for someone else who may need it. So I'm very sensitive to that.
Okay, good. Okay. Any other questions, the speaker? Thank you. You will have a right to come back for rebuttal time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. The next speaker is Adam Freud.
Uh, do I talk into it? Hello, my name is Adam Freud. I am a resident of Thousand Oaks. I live in the same community that Sid does. And I come over to their house probably most of every week. And I've known them my whole life. And Sid always watches out for me and all of her children's friends. And this idea would actually be one of the most, actually would be the smartest idea I've heard in a long time, because there aren't many places for children to go to in our city. We have the teen center, but that's only to a certain age, and then you are not allowed in there past that age. And that's, that's really about it. And the mall isn't the, it's not really the safest place anymore, because of things that I've seen there, like fights and other stuff. And this place would really actually be good, because instead of a child saying to their parents, oh, we're going out for the day, your parents would know where you are. And while your parents know where you are, you'll have fun, and it won't be one of the, it won't be a boring place, because there's always video games. And I and so many other kids love them. So it would just be a very good idea. And that's about it.
Thank you. Commissioner Grumney?
Good evening, Mr. Freud. Thank you so much for coming down and testifying. I'd like to know how old you are?
I am fourteen.
Fourteen. Well, is this the first time that you've ever spoken before a group like this?
Yeah, it is.
It is very important for you to participate in the process, and I just wanna commend you for coming down and doing it. I know it takes a tremendous amount of courage. So I just wanna thank you for doing it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the next speaker is Tim Freud. You come forward, state your name and city residence.
Hi, my name is Tim Freud. I live in Thousand Oaks, California. I'm a real estate broker here in town. And just a couple thoughts on this project. I'm really proud of my son. It's his idea. Couple things. One, as a parent, trying to find activities for a teenager to do, it's really tough. You know, the Jan's Mall, we drop them there to the movies, we pick them up. I like to know when the movie ends, so I know when to get there. But having, she's my youngest one, I've been through it. It's, it's tough, you know? And they wander around, and, you know, it's not that there's unsavory characters, it's Thousand Oaks. But, you know, kids are kids, and they can get into a lot of trouble when given the opportunity. And this is a, a solution that, that's really exciting to me. The game systems that they're using are very expensive. It's hard for a lot of people to buy them. Articles in the paper about this Wii Fit, you can't even find it. I went, we have a Wii, I tried to find it, couldn't even find it. Sid's gonna have one. So that's an active thing. It's a good thing for the kids. We're really excited about that. And then, on a second note, I just wanted to speak about Sid really quickly. I moved here in nineteen ninety-one. We lived across the street from Sid in Agora. She moved to Rancho Canejo. I moved to Rancho Canejo. Our kids have known each other their entire lives, as Adam said, the whole time. She's a single mom. She's a woman of tremendous character. Honesty and stick-to-itiveness. And she's the type of person that, if you want someone to open a, a, a place like this, that's who we want to open it. So we can trust our kids and feel good about it. So I just hope you'll approve it.
Thank you. Commissioner Adam?
Thank you for coming down, Mr. Freud. I do have one concern that you mentioned about the Wii. It's my daughter's birthday this Saturday, and they want a Wii? Are you saying there's no WIs available in Thousand Oaks?
It's pretty tough, you know? My advice would be eBay. Yep. You'll pay a premium, but you look good, so.
Okay. I gotta get busy here. Thank you.
You're sure welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. And I have five statement cards, and they're all in support of the project. We'll go back to staff at this time, if you have further comments. Mr. Chang?
Staff has no comment at this time.
Thank you. Commissioners, have any questions? I'll call Sid Lafitte back up. You have five-minute rebuttal time, and you can say anything you'd like to, if you give your name and city residence again, please.
Sid Lafitte, Thousand Oaks, California. I just wanna say that I wanna thank you for your time, and this will be a good project. It is something that's not just a business to me. I plan on living here. My parents moved here after thirty-one years of living up in Sacramento to live next door to me. This is my community. This is where I wanna raise my kids, in a, in a safe community. So I have every intention of preserving what Thousand Oaks is right now.
Any questions?
I just wanted to say I appreciated the business plan that you submitted. It was very interesting, and you wrote it from the heart. I appreciate it. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And no further questions? Then we will close the public hearing, and time for discussion or motion. Commissioner Grumney?
I move for approval of SUP two zero zero eight dash seven zero two nine, two zero nine, for all of the findings that are currently in the report. Only one additional statement. As a mother of a teenager myself, I know that if there are not things to engage kids, and they're left to hang around in the streets, that's where the trouble comes in. And so I'm thankful that someone's coming forward to try and give opportunities for other young people. So I wish you much success. I hope it's very successful.
Commissioner Adam?
Yes, thank you. I will support the motion as well. And I really liked the way you described the project, Ms. Lafitte. I'm looking for a hands-on approach from you. And it sounds to me like it might be an extension of the Lafitte family in a commercial setting. So, and I'd also like the emphasis on the parent-child relationship. So I have great faith in you that you conduct this very well. So I will support your, their business.
Any other comments?
And I will also support the motion. My sense of Marine, are you sure you weren't a Marine? I think it's great that you're putting the rules down and letting the kids know upfront what you will tolerate and what you won't. And I think kids, even though they may fight it, they really respect that. And I thank you for what you're doing, and I, I wish you great success.
And with that, any other final comments, Commissioner Grumney? No. Then vote, please.
Motion passed, four zero.
And there is a ten-day appeal period. Commissioners, we'll go on to item six C. Would the clerk would please open the hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda item six C regarding case municipal code amendment, MCA two thousand eight seven oh one one nine. Applicant, City of Thousand Oaks. Request to amend the municipal code to allow for an increase in the maximum permitted fence wall heights for properties adjacent to major arterials where additional noise attenuation is requested and deemed necessary. Location, citywide.
Thank you. And good evening, Mr. Kearns. You'll be giving the staff report?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Chair Reynolds and member of the commission. As mentioned before this evening, is MCA two thousand eight seven zero one one nine, proposing to amend the current code requirements to allow fences and walls above six feet for properties adjacent to four or greater lane roads for, to provide a sound attenuation. The purpose of the municipal code amendment is to consider simplifying the application procedure for requests involving an increase to the height of a fence or wall up to nine feet high along major arterials in the city. This amendment qualifies as a Class II C quick exemption, since it involves, if approved, it would involve minor alterations to existing structures. As little background, on February twentieth of two thousand seven, the city council considered a phased proposal to implement certain traffic measures along Lynn Road. As a result of that meeting, council directed staff to complete nine projects, which occurred in two phases related to traffic along Lynn Road. As part of the second phase, the community development department was directed to allow for an increase in the fence and wall heights by eliminating the waiver process. It would be a matter of right. And this municipal code amendment was initiated to consider an allowance for increased heights. The current code requirements allow fences and walls to be constructed to a maximum height of six feet without an entitlement application. Fences of this height do not require building permit, whereas any garden wall that exceeds three feet in height would require a building permit. A fence or wall up to nine feet high requires, currently requires an entitlement application and a building permit. Such waiver requests can be authorized by the community development director, but fence or walls in excess of, in excess of nine feet need to be authorized For requests involving a fence or wall in excess of six feet, up to nine feet high, minor modification and/or, and/or administrative action would be required. Both application processes take about six to eight weeks to process, with each submittal, with each submittal requiring an acoustical study to determine whether there is a noise-related circumstance that makes it necessary to extend the height. The minor modification fee, as shown on previous slide, is seven hundred seventy-five dollars, and the administrative action filing fee is one thousand one hundred and thirty dollars. Several perimeter walls felt community have been substantially modified with a material that's inconsistent with what was originally installed. And these modifications appear to be primarily for privacy, and provide limited noise attenuation. And these next four slides will demonstrate some of the non-conforming comparisons that have been created. As shown in this slide, a corrugated plastic material has been added to the, the top of a cinder block wall to, primarily for privacy. These, these types of additions have little noise attenuation benefit. In this slide, you see a, a cinder block wall extended with a, a similar material, but there's a slight difference in shade, and it's been installed on top of the brick cap, and it's a different sized block material. And on this slide, it demonstrates siding installed on top of a cinder block wall. And here is just a wood fence with a framing work installed on the street side on a slumpstone This amendment is proposing to allow fences and walls to be constructed up to nine feet high without entitlement, as long as certain criteria are satisfied. This amendment will codify specific criteria and, and general design standard. And it will provide an application process for those situations that do not meet the standards. And it will eliminate the entitlement application fees and reduce the processing timeframe to approximately This amendment will establish six criteria in order for a wall to qualify for an increase above six feet. First, the wall must be located adjacent to a four-mortgane arterial, as designated in, on the circulation element of the general plan. It must be determined that the additional height is necessary and would be effective in attenuating noise, and an acoustical study may be required to demonstrate that substantial noise levels exist. Three, the height will not interfere with pedestrian or vehicular sight distance. And that a terrace wall design is not feasible. This is a, this picture demonstrates a typical terrace wall design. This is two and a half feet of slumpstone block, then a three-foot wide planter. And at the terminus, there's a six-foot wide, six-foot height block wall installed. With help of landscaping, it really softens the overall mass of the, of the structure. It's gonna require that the materials and colors are compatible with the existing perimeter fences and walls, and that the walls include certain architectural elements, such as pilasters, planters, bands, and landscaping, to break up the massing of the, the horizontal and vertical plane of the wall. If this amendment is adopted, it will eliminate the entitlement for fences and walls that meet the criteria established. The existing waiver processes will still remain. So if any wall does not meet the standard created or established in this amendment, it will still have a waiver process to exhaust, to seek a, their additional height. And the criteria provide clear design expectations, address the issues of location and sound attenuation, require compatible designs, and address public safety. Now, the processing fees for residences will be reduced by the elimination of the entitlement process, and the processing timeframe will be substantially lowered, down to about four weeks, plus or minus a timeframe for processing. Therefore, staff has recommended that the planning commission recommend a city council approval of this... approval of this municipal code amendment based on the findings contained in the staff report, and staff is available for questions.
Questions for staff? Commissioner Adam.
Good evening. I just want to get something clarified. Condition four states that terrorist walls are not... Wait, wait a minute, let me rephrase that. This would not apply when terrorist walls are not feasible, or would, I beg your pardon, would apply when terrorist walls are not feasible. So then, by inference, then what we're saying is that the walls that would apply are not the terrorist walls as depicted in the staff pictures, it's more these straight-up-and-down, unarticulated-type walls, correct? I mean, I know condition six talks about pilasters, et cetera, but we're more talking about the kind of walls in this picture, aren't we?
Well, the wall in that supplemental picture is not articulated at all. It's just a one-straight plane vertically and horizontally. There's nothing to break up that massing of the wall at all. We would require that there's some sort of articulation, either architectural bands which can be installed across the wall, or use a different wall pattern to give a, you know, a little more architecture to, articulation to the wall, or install planters along the wall, or just have some vines or some sort of material that creep along the wall to soften the overall mass.
But if there was an existing six-foot unarticulated wall, and someone wanted to add three feet to it, based on the municipal code amendment we're talking about tonight, how would you have them, you know, utilize what you just mentioned, the horizontal bands, the pilasters, the planters? I mean, it doesn't seem to me that would be feasible.
Well, you can't, cannot just add on to a six-foot-high wall. It does require an engineering. So by doing so, it's going to require tear down, build up the footing, larger rebar, and calculations for wind loads on these walls. So it's going to be a rebuild. At that point, we can address it and get the articulation in the wall, the additional pilasters, different materials, something to make it not as imposing when we look from the streetscape appearance.
Oh, that's interesting. So if a wall, if a wall came before you like this, and then someone said, "I want to make it nine feet," you wouldn't add three feet to the top, you'd have to tear it down and start all over again?
Or they would have to get engineering, do some sort of underpinning. I'm not sure what, what the engineer would say for something that large. In that case, that's actually a retaining wall, so that's, so other structural challenges.
I see. So there were, there's no circumstances where a wall owner would just add a couple of feet onto an existing wall?
Well, you could now if there was, in some instances, Long Lynn Road, for example, there was walls that were constructed at four feet. In all likelihood, that footing was large enough to go up to a six-foot-high wall, but we need them to demonstrate that that footing is large enough. They can add a couple cores and go up to six feet. I'm not aware of any wall situations where they were designed to go larger than the six feet, because, again, that's the engineering cost and everything that's involved, to beef up the footing for just a six-foot-high wall. There was no anticipation when that was being built to go up to anything higher than that.
I see, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Kearns, whose responsibility would it be if there was graffiti on this wall, on the new, let's say, nine-foot-high wall? Whose responsibility is it to remove the graffiti?
Well, we actually have a graffiti action program here in the city, and they can make a phone, the homeowner can make a phone call, or any citizen could, and the graffiti action program will go out there and remove the graffiti, either paint over it or sandblast it off.
So the property owner is not under any financial obligation then to paint it over?
Not with the system we have in place.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff? And I don't have any cards. Is there any other discussion, Mr. Kearns, or anyone else? Then I'll close the public hearing, and now is the time for a discussion on the recommendation to the city council.
Commissioner Adam.
I guess I could start it off. One thing Mr. Kearns mentioned, and I, it did clarify something for me. You know, I was under the assumption that if we have a six-foot wall and somebody wants to make it nine, they just put another three feet on top of it, but structurally, if that doesn't work, you'd have to basically start over again, and that's how you would incorporate the pilasters, planters, et cetera, to make the wall more aesthetically pleasing. I presume I described that correctly. So that, that took away one concern I had. However, and I can certainly see, I mean, I'm all in favor of any process that cuts fees to residents and that cuts waiting time and permits and all that. I mean, what I'm concerned about here is, I'm just wondering, if, if we eliminate the fees, in a sense, does that encourage higher walls? I mean, do the, do the fees in place now, in a sense, discourage people from building higher walls? I mean, we have a highway element, scenic highway element that pretty much states that we want to protect the view and the view shed, and the inference there is that we'd stay away from these higher walls that could kind of canyonize a street such as Lynn Road. And I just wonder if the fees that are in place now, in a sense, although they may be a bit of a hassle, tend to discourage these, these nine-foot walls? I guess I'm, I'm just, I'm not real comfortable with that nine-foot height, nine feet's high. But perhaps I could hear what some other commissioners are thinking.
Mr. Towne, you wanted to make a comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This, this item overall would make the process a bit simpler, a bit faster, a bit less expensive for residents, so theoretically, it could result to, or result in, more such walls. The direction from city council was for staff to look at this item specifically with regard to a waiver requirement to make the process simpler, and that's what we proposed before you this evening. We still feel that the conditions that are included in this proposed amendment do provide the safeguards for design, for articulation. As Mr. Kearns mentioned, and as you just noted, as a wall is basically reconstructed, we would require that it be terraced or, and/or other design elements incorporated. So, the photos that we distributed were simply, again, to provide a relationship between a typical person, more or less, and different wall heights, but in fact, as illustrated in the PowerPoint, we would require articulation per the standards in this proposed ordinance.
Just a couple of things in addition. Although the applicant wouldn't have to pay a fee, there's still some expense involved. They will still have to pay for an acoustic study to show the need for it, and, and the concern about whether it's nine feet or eight feet or whatever really is irrelevant here because the only basis you can increase it above that height is if it's for noise purposes only, and they would have to have evidence that it really is needed to increase it to that height. So, at that point, we're looking at it solely from a noise attenuation perspective and not from an aesthetic perspective.
Oh, I completely understand. One of the conditions would be noise attenuation. In fact, that's probably the primary condition. I wonder how my fellow commissioners would feel if we, if we looked at a height limit of, say, eight feet unentitled, and then from eight to nine, then we, then there'd have to be an entitlement involved, and then from nine beyond, it would be, have to go to the planning commission.
Well, I would think that staff probably has investigated this, and they came up with a figure of nine feet. I really think that it would make our city look cleaner. Let's say you drive down Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and where they, there is a wall, and people have added three feet onto it, it's not that attractive, and this way, at least, the city would have control over doing that. But I'm sure that the nine-foot figure probably came up with some engineering. Mr. Towne, did you want to?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The nine-foot figure came about principally because the community development director at this time has the authority to approve wall heights in, up to 50% of the existing maximum, which is six feet, therefore nine feet. So to keep things consistent, that is where the nine feet came from. It is within the commission's jurisdiction to provide a recommendation that would have, say, the expedited processing for a wall height to eight feet, with the current process still in place for wall heights between eight and nine feet that would require an entitlement. As, as commission council noted, however, if the acoustical study requires that a nine-foot-tall wall be installed, that is what staff would look at, and then that would be the basis for the wall height, rather than an aesthetic consideration.
But now, aren't we, okay, and in the code, and I read the code, it does say that the community development director can rule up to 50% of the wall height, so that's six foot, 50%, now the three, go to nine. But aren't we changing that now? I mean, albeit the, the different criteria are still in place, but now we're saying that the wall owner can basically go, as long as he satisfies his criteria, he can go to nine now? We're taking it out of the community development's hands and putting it in the hands of the wall owner?
The community development director would still have to review the need for it to go up to nine feet. If there's no need for it to go up to nine feet, then he hasn't met that finding, and the community developer wouldn't be authorized to allow it to go to nine feet. If the, if the homeowner wants to increase it to nine feet for any other reason than to actually reduce the noise, then they would have to go through the regular process. So, if there's no need for it from a noise perspective, then the homeowner wouldn't be able to do it. The community development director still controls that.
Mm-hmm. I, yeah, I, I understand that. And again, like I said, I'm all in favor of streamlining the process, but it just looks like, looks to me like this process makes it a lot easier to build a nine-foot wall than it is now. And, and to me, nine feet is, is tall, you know? I don't know if it really fits the criteria for the scenic highway element. I, I mean, I don't know, we're going to have an epidemic of nine-foot walls along Lynn Road? Maybe yes, maybe no, but there's other roads too that are, that are involved here. If you look at the element, there's, there's a number of roads that don't meet the sound attenuation qualities that some others do, and... But again, like I said, that nine feet seems overly tall to me.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, I'll add to the discussion. I don't have an issue with the nine feet. I don't think we're going to have an epidemic of people going up to nine feet. You know, it's going to require that they tear down their whole wall there. That's an expensive venture. It still has to meet strict criteria by the community development director. I just don't see this as, as being an issue. I think we're going to see very few people utilize it, but if they do have noise concerns and it meets that threshold, you know, it, it fits. I think, I think it's very reasonable adding in, you know, if it's over nine feet, must come back to the commission now. You know, so much for streamlining. Now we've got the applicant coming here and having to pay another fee to go in front of the planning commission over a foot. I mean, that doesn't make much sense to me. I think what staff has put together is well-thought-out, and looking at these pictures of these different creations, if we could get rid of that, that would be nice. This is a step in the right direction.
Any other comments?
Well, I, I agree with the...
Commissioner Grumney?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I agree with Commissioner Fisher. I guess, you know, my thought in regards to it is, is that the people are going to be coming forward who are going to be requesting this are people who are, who are essentially hurting. Something has, you know, caused the traffic to get to a point that the noise is there, and adding any more to them, you know, quite frankly, I think is wrong. So, I'm, I am in favor of this, and I'd like to make a motion. If you could help me with it, of how to, to make the motion, I'd like to move to approve, is that what we're doing?
No, to recommend.
To recommend.
To the city council.
To the city council. Help me further. Tell me what I need to write on this one. This one's different.
To recommend to the city council that they approve municipal code amendment, MCA...
MCA 2008-70119 for the findings that are stated in the report.
Any other comments to the motion? Any other final comments, Commissioner Grumney?
No.
Then please vote.
Motion passed, 3 to 1, with Commissioner Adam opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll continue on to Ms. Lainey's items, or the community development director's reports and referrals. Mr. Towne.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On page 37 of your packet are the upcoming cases that are currently scheduled for September when you reconvene on September 8th. We have two cases, and we have three currently planned on the 22nd, plus another one was just added recently that has not shown up on the schedule yet. So, we will be adding more cases, obviously, for October as those come forward. Also, I wanted to mention for the commission's benefit on page 39, in terms of recent council actions, the commission on June 23 recommended approval of the Affordable Housing Ordinance that was considered by the city council on July 22nd, and it was approved, all four programs. And so that is now behind the council and will become part of the code shortly. And that's all I had at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, minutes of the July 14 meeting? Commissioner Fisher?
Move approval of the minutes of July 14, 2008.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion passed, 4-0.
Are there any AB 1234 reports? Okay, then we'll go on to commission comments, and I'd like to begin by wishing our Assistant City Attorney the happiest 40th birthday a person could have. I know that she looked forward to that birthday after last year's display, and she should know that all of us, it's all in jest because we like her and respect her, and I hope that you did have a very nice birthday, Tracy. Any other comments? Then I will adjourn the meeting to September 8, 2008, and have a great summer.